The following meeting was a meeting with the library libra resources trustees, Colorado and the college. Very good for us. And then the grid here. We're here. Library finances available. And Dick is here. So we also have Jean Acker with the director. All right. And I believe we have about a minute to work on the proof. So we will move on to new business surplus material.
Um, I don't think that's. It's a surplus material. I just want to make sure.
No, it's on the agenda.
Okay. Let's do the budget and then I'll wrap that.
Okay. All right. So we're talking about the FY23 budgeting course. All right. And we have some documents to hand out?
Yes. So these, I circled out budget points earlier, but Erin didn't know what editing and that everyone editing haven't given any.
Yeah.
These is what we left. So I looked around. I literally got stuck in the muck for a while. Multiple variables. Trying to look at different budget scenarios and how there's just somebody or that's how one thing affects another. How we get requests we make affects how much we spend from the funds. What happens to the nine years here is this. So that's why I circled out those original comparison sheets. Yes.
The one you had earlier today, did I check it out?
Yes. Now it hasn't changed. But if anybody needs it, I have it. Um, so my purpose in every meeting is Alex.
I don't know. I've got two. I don't know which one I would pick.
This is the monthly program.
I think that's some place.
So I became kind of excited on making these comparisons. It just felt like secret. Because it just felt like with us, you know, using our funds and our state aid in ways that we have to now. Just uncomfortable making requests, not knowing what's happening in effect of that. So I was hoping this document would make me feel clear. And for a brief moment in time it did. And then I started to get on. Oh, I went back again and realized it was a lot of information. Throw it in the committee. So that was when I, this afternoon, formed these two boxes. One on the left is the lesser asks. One on the right is the biggest ask. So the biggest ask is really what Erin and I, the quote for the trustees, would go for. And I've demonstrated here that basically the biggest ask is the COLA. All materials being paid for municipal funds in a 28-hour position. The impact that has on the budget line item is a 24% increase on that budget each year. The total budget increase is a 20%. And that's why I have let it go because I think that's really helpful that the town will set in this part. It means no salaries being increased. It's lovely to see that zero now there. And the materials that we pay for the funds would be around $12,000. That is with materials increased as well. All of these scenarios give materials increase $10,000 except for that last one. Which I was trying to see how that was going to affect everything. Didn't affect things in a very positive way. So the lesser asks, you know, for the purposes of discussion, has the municipal code plus the 28-hour position. And it compares it in all salaries still being paid from state aid and the annual shortfall. I mean, where is here like it's best to call it annual shortfall in salaries. Is listed there as well. Again, both include the increase in materials request from the town. And these are those you can see because we have a lot of our funds and our state aid. With the one on the right, we're starting just about our annual allotment in state aid. We don't have more than less than a year. The one on the left is certainly what we need to pay for state aid. And our materials budgets as budget points, it's hard to sustain five hundred and eight. And FY22, we're having about $15,300. But that was up there. That was higher than four years. We have materials request budget increase to be a hundred and eighty percent. So that's created a notch in the box. By two boxes.
It seems to me that the thing we discussed first is for the position, how we justify it. Then we have to decide, we have a justification of how we justify it. And so we do that and we look for how we pay for it.
That's true.
Right?
That's true.
This is the administrative position.
In, no, not necessarily. In the full-time position called library assistant. The hours would be 28 hours and four hours of convenience. And this position could get into the set of implementation, which helps to do something to stay ready better. It would be kind of a combination. It would, we would put admin assistant help in that position. But we'd also use that position for coverage of service, coverage of children's and additional tasks.
So a floater, is there a heavy focus on the discretion on that floater?
Pretty much so. I mean, I think it would be more in library. It would be at a higher pay grade. You can have submissions for that, just for presentations. It would be some higher pay grade. And this was Erin's. And, but it would be, this person, position might help with some of the admin tasks. But they would also be a library assistant in the, you know. They would be like, they would do more library tests as well. They might be a little more experienced. They might come from MBLC. They might be someone looking for a part-time. I mean, it's a full-time job, but it's a part-time job. Job is decent, but without even more hours than they might deserve. There are a lot of those positions.
How many hours would you envision this person committed to diminishing their reflection? Those are weekly on going. So you have a sense of how much of the 28 hours were actually spent doing those kinds of tasks? What are the hours of availability this person had to fill in with other functions?
I estimate four to six hours for administrative testing. That includes data entry, bookkeeping, portions of payroll, input, bills, without chairs, and file. Which is a bigger issue. This is a disaster. So I would estimate four to six hours.
So plus 22 hours of available time to support other functions. All right. So this is a different argument from what's happening.
Yes.
That's why I'm studying in place of choosing.
Right.
I'm used to the argument of just paying people too much to do tasks that each gets on the table.
And this is the position that, you know, in our budget points, we have the end. And this is just all picked out this afternoon. It improves staffing from insufficient to adequate levels. You know, we still want to, well, the only Aaron will let me describe that. Because that was your opinion about that. That we really want to talk about the adequate, not full. Because it takes money.
For staffing levels or sustaining the funding?
Both.
Okay. Well, we know that from a funding standpoint, we are funding some salary retirements from funds that are limited in terms of not recurring. So stating that certain amount of the year, but the other funds are limited. So this year, I think we have to actually take out extra chunks from those to cover salaries, which was more than just the interest, which brings down these funds that aren't ever going to get released.
Right. So we dipped into principal.
Yep.
I thought we did.
We didn't dip into the principal. We dipped into the buildup of interest that's current of the last 10 years.
Right. So we didn't do this one time.
Right. We didn't do it one time.
Right. We can't do it one time.
Right.
It's a nice thing that you can do all its funds. I thought we augmented salaries, the schools are improved, you know, are accumulated state aid funds.
We have.
What did we, what other funds did we dip into to cover salaries?
Oh, not salaries on the cover. So for our total budget, I'm sorry. For our total budget, materials, the 19, this is where it gets a little detailed play. The 19% requirement for the materials budget comes partly from town funds that are standing currently. And partly from these other funds.
Okay. So the other funds we use, the materials we qualified and the salaries.
Well, I mean, yeah, we only use state aid. So, right.
Okay. We use our gift of memorial funds. For materials in order to qualify the percentage that we have to. And that is, we're dipping, we're not dipping into the principal's interest.
Yes.
Officially.
At this point.
Right.
But basically.
Actually, that would be correct.
The stating funds, while we do have some savings, what we get on annual basis isn't enough to cover salaries that are given from that.
Right. We're looking at on an annual basis, usually somewhere around $8,000. Eight to 10 in state aid. We have some in reserve and that's being tapped into. Reality is that reserve, if you continue down this path, will be utilized and much in the future. By our standards.
Yes. And we already use state aid for other things. Mostly staffed with memberships of professional development and marriage, which has been an initial requirement for it. But we already, you know, I don't know what type of employees that professional development is covered. I don't know where it's covered, but it's not in power by risk. It's much of a risk.
It's a bit of a mistake.
So would part one of the goal be to get half-salary salaries from a regularly sustainable public source, a town?
Right.
That's a core one.
So the goal is to have sufficient funds to stay at municipal funds to cover the full cost of salaries.
That can be the goal.
I mean, Karen understood. Karen understood. I understand. Just want to make sure everybody else on this thing said to it.
So is there ever a chance that the state aid that's still around could be requested back by the state?
Is there a fallback provision? No, I actually, I've got to see.
I think we're rewarded based on your supporting your certification. We're getting our measures now, but.
Yeah.
I think the state, it's by knowledge, it's covered in my experience. To use the state system like that.
Distributed.
Distributed and requested. Requested that.
Okay.
And ask what you should expect from the board. So it has to be. Was there anything?
So that was kind of part one, like where I saw the budget. Part two, we break to get focused, but part two is it has to do with adequate staffing levels in the library to meet a new digital demand by the community. The community requires, they need a lot from us. They need time and they need expertise. And so by funding this position, which would be below or have served below our head of services, it would help those two positions really leverage their skills and expertise in a really good way and help the community like they need. And some of the other tasks, you know, could be delegated to this person. And that way, hopefully, we could get up to an adequate staffing level where we can, we can help the public the way that they need to be helped. So for instance, today, we had Catherine had a call with somebody who was struggling with canopy, trying to start a new account with them. There's a library card. Gavin was the only one at the desk, you know, so she had to write back and ask me for help because it turned into a bigger confusing thing with pigeon on the phone. We might have people who want to check out their books. And the phone is, you know, also hurting. And so it just gets to the point where we have to say no. And we don't want to say no.
As an example, when Katie had to go down, she was sick. Because she was, the kids were sick. She had a mom. And for the first time in a while, we had seven or maybe? Very rambunctious twins in the building.
Yeah.
And the three of us were trying to meet, it was just Kathy, I think it's the dad's. And so the twins had three ring down in the children's room. We could see that they were, it's not up to no good, but it's rambunctious. And we had no way to, you know, I just couldn't even read it coming down there. And that's, that's just, you know, it's a perfect example of under being short-staffed is hardship. And then there, you know, I put it in forward passively because the parents need it, they need it. But we have, we really have to.
And so that's where part two comes into play. The addition of a second, not one, full-time position, but full-time, not, it's benefited or anything, but not.
The 28 hours is sufficient to meet? Not the full?
It's conservative. And then we would look at it and see how we are need. So we wouldn't start in excess.
Right. Because you build two, you're building four. Well, I think that's part of the reality of the message. From all of you, if you decide to do it, it's got to be a emphasis of the same.
And one other positive of this position would be that it creates a career path for our practitioners. We have fantastic practitioners. And maybe it creates an opportunity to grow with us, which would be one.
Well, we're going to go through this, which has stability, more staffing, and obviously, you have young folks like that who are part-time. Who are also looking to advance and prove themselves. It seems like the third thing is that it may reduce. Or not. Where staff are not constantly being hammered with situations that can't. It's not so much overwork, though it is a little frustrating. Being in a position where you're not able to drive, but that creates license for turnover and seat turnover.
Right. It's not just frustrating to the patron. It's also frustrating to the employee who wants those, they have the ability and help and they're just limited.
He's very talented. Yeah, he believed the library, he goes places that paid better and gave him a better job. So he felt, if he seen it, he's going to have it. My understanding was, it's a place to play in parts.
It was not really just on that level. So you have a little bit of pain part two. On the administrative level as well, you know, the, I think, in the US, we keep trying to be a good library, be a good work. Keep trying to do all the cool things because Erin and I really love all the cool things. But we just find ourselves in a position where we're taking on a new software, which are, who does do that? But then we have very low quality implementing it. Health staff implemented, patrons implemented, you know, it's just, we don't, we can't do all the, we're trying to do some. We're trying to do ourselves what to be better at trying to focus on the things that we know we can get to. And that most important and not keep trying to strive to be the corporate.
We don't have.
And I think it's indicative of the fact that libraries have changed. It's trying to be, I'm just going to put those changes on and being able to apply that new level of service whenever that may be. Cool.
Right as well. And what it does really, it helps us leverage our existing materials technology very well. That we can't help.
So what do you want us to follow?
Well, I didn't know if you wanted to have any discussion about what was the plan initially in this, what we had to be, continuing to handle from state aid.
Well, I think, I think the objective, we pay an additional money from state aid because that's all we have. Like if I understand this correctly, budget of your show has everything coming out of municipal funds. We would in fact be covering those increases from municipal funds if in fact we get the money we were asking for. But if, but if they decide to give us less, then we would obviously have a dividend, a state aid. I personally feel like you would be a big ask. Is that in the real situation and more desirable situation than that? You know, if we have to live with something less desirable, we're accustomed to doing that. Yeah. Part of the communication struggle is that through years, we've constantly been able to do a lot, do less. Yes, we're lucky, I'm sensitive. Well, there's eight over the head in Japan. And the fund rate that we've gained this year, we don't succeed fully in a year, in two years. Is what that means. What that means in terms of what that means in overall, you know, all the issues we've discussed that are, in which, which would not function properly. Of the, of the library, to meet the management. And to meet the goals of municipal state of the box, state books to municipal funds, right? So we need to model our task with every bit of what was just up there. People call us over. So we work.
Right. We know what we need. We just don't know how best they can help us.
Yes.
But we have to tell them that we do need this.
If we don't tell them, then they don't know.
Right.
Well, I think, we probably need to, I don't know, to do the same part.
Yes. Yes. So I already have a stubborn sheet of sort of manual things and things are talking. It's been one that don't necessarily get in the budget. But if you have any.
I think what we do is, we look at the ask based on what we think is the best scenario at this time. And we understand that it's not a full level of function that we, even though it's, it's essential. Doesn't get us really, really involved.
It's not an initiative per se. It's not going to let us into more hours. It's getting us to a newer standard of service.
And it's going to get us closer to nearly all the, so that they are, which is a, very sharp. And I think we have to remind the latter, we need to remind them that it's our idea, our fault, right? That we're already here, we're already here. We have to solve this problem by X and Y. And we need to show us playing. I'm not going to agree. I don't know if this is a vote. I think we need to, you know, vote and vote and recommend that this budget based on the biggest ask.
Do you want to see?
Yeah. Do you guys want, you're like, yeah, man, that was, any other thoughts?
Well, technology is not going to slow down.
Yes. It's not. And it's, you know, the other thing that maybe has a pretty interesting, a lot of money in the waters. A lot of lawyers are asking for line items. These are our library expense lines. So this, this is the sheet that is put out by the town. You can see it says 2019.
Right.
So it's just, it's, the salaries.
Here's a, this is the form that's submitted for the test.
This along with another form that actually lays out each position. It's a little clunky because they do it, they ask for it by hour, hourly, because these are all hourly people. And it gets very confusing trying to give them an annual salary. So for our purposes for tonight, I just filled in the bottom part. So what total salaries were in FY22, what our request is for FY23, the amount of increase, and then the amount of development. Percentage increase. And so I've included here, included all staff salary increases made from state aid in FY22 plus 120 hour position. So that's salaries, which gets carried down to the total budget on this page. And it adds it too, along too. And it adds it to, along to hour, and by twenty-three requested expense items, which are all the same, no increases except an additional ten thousand. And then down, so down at the bottom, you'll see the amounts for the total budget, expenses for the total budget, increases for both. And then in addition, because we now have fifty-five thousand billings, this is added into our total budget. You see the decrease in total library budget for the state, so that's seventeen percent. And then in the columns on the right, it explains how the nineteen percent of the total library budget, whether to come up with eighty-three thousand, six hundred and thirty-six dollars, that's nineteen percent, and seventeen thousand, that's what you have to go with for that F twenty-three. So that makes sense to me.
Yeah, can you, can you, can you follow line, you don't specify, you don't make this?
Yes.
Well, maybe you can.
It's maintenance.
Fine, that's, that's the money that we don't.
Yes, that's the fifty-five thousand, that's management charges. And a question, well, I don't, I will work with you, so that's a question. In terms of, I'm pretty sure last year, I think it was when passing, and that's technically an out budget. So I, I think the question needs to be asked when happens to have.
Exactly, yeah.
Have been. No, I know it's a carryover, but that, that's an hour budget. I mean, it seems to be, even though it's managed by James, and historically it's been his budget, I can understand that there's policy confusion what happens now, but if it is an out budget, then we have to remember there was extra. It seems to be.
Well, it's technically, really, you know, it's an out budget.
It is. It's our total budget, our total budget is four hundred and forty-three thousand.
I thought that was in his.
No.
DMRC specifically for library maintenance.
It's, it's in the library budget, that's how it's happening.
We, we put it into the budgets and then they say you got them.
I think it used to be the budget, but up until we moved it over.
Even my.
Yes. It took a while, I'm sure. That would make this total budget, you had some for school, you had some for.
Oh, I assume that, that, that already, it basically, I assume to quote it and then the library, they'll put it in full way and add in this, upkeep.
Well, we had carpet replacement for, for views, is that valid?
It would be, it would be covered.
That's normal.
It's a capital expense, capital.
You said it before, it would be managed.
No, you wanna wash, you wanna wash it, that would be a capital expense, because those are hard capital funds.
And it's on the details.
But it's, it's, doesn't, the, the, the amount doesn't matter.
It's awesome.
It's about ten thousand and it's, it's bidding purposes. Under ten thousand, you don't have to go out to bid, you need to do good business practices in order to utilize, you usually get to get three, four, five. Then ten thousand, twenty, twenty-five thousand, and then three, it's another process. After twenty-five thousand, it's a full long, uh, bidding process, but it's capital money. If he has this money for maintenance, it's different than the money is in the library because they did, they put in, uh, two years ago, sixty-six thousand dollars for capital work on building, it would have to be that kind of, where the capital expenditure, anything you do is building oriented, is capital.
So what are examples of, 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 of.
They were them on it. I understand, in my experience, that capital funds are bigger than operational funds. What he has are operational funds. Now, she's just doing it. Capital expenditure of operational funds, that's the priority.
Well, because, you know, it's, it's like, oh.
That's, 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 I'm saying, you can't replace the market, it's not, you can't, can't put it. Yes, and that's, that's great, exactly.
Right, okay.
That's.
Well, there's, there are other funds, so that, we still don't know.
There are, no, I'm saying, it's, it's, you're, because there's a lot of thousands that stole from the last year, the slide costs, and that's not their expense.
I, I.
So that, that has to be started between now and then.
No, I don't think so.
This collage of money is gone.
No, I know it's gone.
But going forward, the same.
Going forward, yeah. I see, because now I get.
Okay. If you see it, then I think it's a matter of asking. Okay. What, what needs to be done?
Yeah, because I think, I think in James' mind, I think, you know, because he always says to me, you know, I'll see what about my budget, this kind of thing, depending on those snow habits and plumbing problems and other parts and staples. So I, I feel like he still manages it around me.
Yeah, well, if it's in, if it's in our budget, we cannot take that and utilize it in another part.
And that's, that's what I'm not entirely sure has been pointed out.
That's a conversation about that, perhaps.
Yes.
It's clear that it's, that's, that's. And the library budget for library maintenance, that's the only thing that can be used, can be used, just held back. Same thing, out here.
I, you know, I could be totally wrong, but I think.
It's a profession, it's a, it's a profession that has.
I've got a couple of questions, guys. Pretty basic, but I don't know. Is the M A R subject of statute?
Yes. It's a, it's a statute.
Okay. Is the percentage which must be dispensed for materials also subject to statute? Or is it a reg, relate, or recommendate?
I think it's, I think that is a recognition. But I need to look into that.
Don't, that, that makes sense.
For the, we were told, we were told this year, when you said, I want to do it to obtain this, it seemed like you were a little harmonious.
Yeah.
And then said, well, you're gonna look at it with the hairy eyeballs.
Right. Yeah, she said, whatever, you can find the money somewhere, you don't want to go down that road. I'm still a little unclear on the reason she said that, but it's, it sounded to be like if you go down that road, you go down the hairy eyeballs. But also, I've been waiting for sixteen years, and she just really didn't, felt very strong.
So.
They're, they're looking at us to, over again, that, they're gonna just, right, right? And, you want to maintain, all that stuff either, but again, they are.
Right. Would it be to, to incentivize within the budget points to refer effort to the statutory nature of the M A R? And it's handicapping or handcuffing of some of the budget process for us?
Um, yeah, I wish you're concerned that, that, you know, that was in there, or not, it's, but a comment in there, because the town account is, is aware.
But is the town accountant on the Fedcom?
No. Right. So, right.
Same thought for the materials.
Again, whatever the staff is, you need a preference, you need the staffs.
Right.
Whatever, part of Gene, chapter one, and you have to, to get out of preference.
And this budget request goes a long way towards meeting the mark, as a, just, you know, two birds want to stay.
No, Gene has worked hard to approach that M A R requirement over the years, and this has been helpful to me. I think a gene inflection in that maybe wouldn't, right? Just thoughts, guys.
Sure.
Just thoughts. Rising out of confusion.
Yeah, that's right. I may have to do this every time. Sorry, I've talked about it for ten years, so.
I see what you mean, guys.
Yeah, they did, to puzzle this.
Well, no, it's statute, you know, it's a stronger item than regulation. Rates can be changed, they seem.
Exactly. This is, this is statute. And the thing that I have to find, is our numbers were established, um, two thousand and five, two thousand and four, or somewhere around there, when the reality of what we had in terms of staff, and it was on, like, today, I mean, that's, we had twelve staff numbers in two thousand and five, I think it was, you know? That's how we were at it.
And not much did you know demand.
Yeah, I know, right? And that's, that's a good point.
Yeah.
And not.
Or anyway.
It wasn't one of them.
Just sort of anecdotal, this day in the life of the library, a part of the library.
Correct.
The director. And twenty, twenty, oh, twenty, mitigation.
Oh, five.
Yeah, but it's business sense and a thing that.
Eighty-eight dollars.
I'm just saying.
Salaries. Right.
It's appropriate, particularly.
Oh, absolutely. The reality of what takes place in the library and the way it functions now, it's, you know, it's changed.
It's very.
It is.
That, it's especially in the monitoring.
Absolutely.
Yes, rates.
I think that's.
So that's why we, we don't, just off the cuff, it's impossible.
No, absolutely. That's why, there's an educational process, there is, there's a lot of people who do like to do that, so you don't know what's.
Right. Or don't do use a library and don't.
And don't know.
Don't know what's involved in getting them.
Getting them that book, that code pair, from where up.
Yeah.
So, okay. So, do we.
Is there any way? We didn't have time for that. Explain some of those things.
Well, some things are explained, or he's playing the letter.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, these, these letters are, are a challenge, yeah? These are, it's easy to be concise underwriting. You had that on the money trail, right? I explained the M A R, you know, that is what they have. Yeah, for people who are part of it, right, it's a nightmare, I've been there, for many years, trying to do this, and probably for those that listen, for every year. You think about it, like, you know, that, that, it's still not, so, so, I think you, you know, have to be wary of how much you're putting, you say, and what, what there is has to be worried on the top.
It can be overwhelming, it's a great anomaly.
If, if you have the face-to-face opportunity, this could be a tan, an opportunity to interact with people, that's when.
Yeah.
And I would say, I think it's complicated to argue in the one hand, we've got, well, staff members, now they can be, you know, I don't know, just kind of laugh because we owe the budget. So, I think, I would, I would refuse, I would pull that argument out with the whole people, because that's a lot of time when we, we screw up.
Well, it's, 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 but it's a rumor, right? It's, it's, um, we had too many, and then we cut way too far, and now we need to come up to get to right, you know, get the right level.
But the word in the letter is about, look how much we're doing now, we used to, this is very important to do, and I think we should, I think, quite some exact way of doing this for.
Yeah. It's a silverstone.
Well, it's not, well, I think, I think it's clear, I think it's, you know, it's, it's, it's true. So let's, let's try to be, you know, home in on what really happens.
Right.
You can still say it's mostly staff, right? Kind of what it depends.
But what else have you done to expect to hear?
I don't know, I don't know what, what's like, not, kind of, or, or, same, I'm always curious, you know, what other town departments have more administrative support than we do?
Um, I, I think they're asking some, as I said before, they've got some new positions that I did earlier, but I don't, I'm down, especially for admin assistants, but I doubt you would find two of the departments that would say they're, they're all, they're good. I believe this year.
No, I'm just thinking, I think that's it, they're good, but they're, you know, they're good, but they're, they're paying for time, okay? So, this job is part-time, right?
And I think they're, I think they're sharing the admin, so I think the deputy secretary is doing a lot of, um, admin assistance for the count, so they are doing some of that share.
So it's part-time and both departments.
Yeah, well, one's, one's full-time.
So what I mean is, if you're sharing the job, then, and it's going to different departments, then it's part-time, I'm sorry, part-time, part-time, and another, that's like, well, that's out of your time, so, so, just apples now.
Right, so that, you know, we have spoken about that, we talked a bit about it, it's, you know, because Tracy mentions it in her, her, um, introduction, she references sharing in general government, she wants to, in situations where you, um, where there might be the possibility of sharing within general government, so apparently we're thinking, okay, well, if we can't get this assistance, maybe some of these people that are sharing already in town, well, they're helping with their bookkeeping, they're helping with their data engineering. So that's something that's on the table, anyway.
Well, you can find out, there's an education that works there, when we data enter these and send a paper spreadsheet to them, that actually we data entered into their home systems, or, you know.
Obviously, you don't have to go to visit the doctor, you can say.
No.
No.
I don't. So maybe they're, they're making, um, for, for that.
So it's work, it's work. So, we should, we are on the watch, yeah, we have forty, less than forty-five minutes before we go to the bottom.
And, yes, and the webinar, you can do here.
Okay.
If I have to, you can do here. You can yell it, or you can.
I can, I can yell it.
Yes, definitely. When I first plonked this.
It's not very basic, I would achieve, it's, that's not much. No, it's, once in the year, children's conference, it's a big screen in there, what is that meant?
It's a, it's missing, or it's, it's broken, it's.
Oh, so it's not working. Oh, no, no, I, I just remember. Okay, so, so, so we, we need to take a load on the.
Maybe so.
Okay, so I guess we'll, we'll, this is what, twenty twenty-three budget, as presented, so we need to, uh, we want to approve the, uh, the budgets, decent, I think it's in the tab. Twenty. I still move, so, I can't pick, so you move, seconded, okay? So, you want to get writing, just, it looks, nice. So, do you like the names? Yeah, it, it, it helps, it helps.
So, I will, you, please, I'll make sure to wait for you to sit off to the channel. You and, and, Eric and I, we're, 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 we're.
Okay.
The letter.
Thank you.
On, send it all off, and we're set up, it's two more.
Okay. Yeah, I'm not available.
I mean, that's.
And I think we, if you all understand the reality of this kind of request, uh, you make it something, or you make it up here in the last, it's in stock, and then you just can fill in those. Educating people, and that's where it comes up.
Yeah, I, I like, I like what you said, you went out, two things, you said, present the real situation, because it is the real situation, so I'm going to link it up.
Right.
And, um, Aaron's, it's a big, again, to the management stage.
Yeah.
And that really is.
It's all, 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 it's The library's goals, could we afford to be, um, documentation project?
We could. Um, and Tracy does want us to get women on that, which is a, a special art. Um, Mark.
Mark, yeah.
So, yeah, I, I'm not sure exactly how to tie it in with.
Other goals.
Yes, but with the request itself.
Oh.
I mean, because the, the goal of all that, let's just put it out there, the, the goal of that project is to take some bunch of people, most of them are staff, for.
That's all I'm saying.
I was concerned.
It brings the wine.
Which nice when the other people. Um, anyway, the, the purpose of that project was to take the oldest off library staff for what was really good for digitizing, making our files, answering questions, all that. So that's kind of a, uh, just staff relief project. Yeah, so I just don't want to apologize in any fashion.
No, I think, because it's not about, we need to buy that to do those compact.
Right. Right.
Well, that was our budget. Yeah, it wasn't going to be coming out of our budget, like Tracy said, it's a separate, separately funded project. Is my understanding, which she commented on that day. That, uh, you know, and she now wants, she want us to prepare an article for the launch?
She wants us to put a proposal.
A proposal, to see if they'll. Well, that would be proposals, in my mind, three, uh.
Both.
It's like there's something coming.
Too much to spread. And I've had some very helpful information from somebody at the RBC, but I can't honestly, I don't have the time to tell you just yet. But everything's going to be very helpful. So I don't think, I don't think Tracy will be very fancy.
I always wondered, um, what's the bottom line, what's it going to cost to do the same, same as the fast one?
So he's gonna help me with, um, envisioning what it would look like and what's on the price of an artist. How it would be, so I think that would be a great idea.
Well, we've talked about it, there were, there were three financial elements, the octopus, digitizing, how we do this on a computer. And even if it's digitized, it has to be some kind of a, a web access that you can bridge and will now get you into those few databases, by going into that single location.
And Tom Holland. Leslie did an association.
Sure.
As a senior volunteer, I did not feel as comfortable as what I met there. And they needed someone to go in the little room, out in the shed, sort of, in the storage area. And I did all the books and filled it in by hand in Excel sheet, I didn't do a big deal. I didn't have that much skill to do that. It was, um, kind of a one, just cleaning all the stuff and that on, whatever. And being out there by myself in the maria wasn't particularly welcome for anybody else. It's just the way it is. It's, it's hard. But it is, I'm in control. Anyway, um, and it took me, they didn't have the time for this, but moved. Took me about a week, not forty hours, but about thirty hours to put it, and record it. They had already done the papers and things like that. I would think, um, because they keep saying, you know, Spain are the senior volunteer. That there would be somebody who would be appropriate, who could physically just write down what is there. I was ready.
But I, you know, for the purposes of the proposal, it, it really, from where I'm coming from, it seems to be, uh, with my skill, someone to help us do this, so pressing on artist. I may have been as far as the digitizing part, because the artist has to help us figure out what we want to digitize, if that makes sense.
If you're gonna be putting out an article, you're looking to improve this project. Whereas it's gonna cost two digitizes. They're likely done some digitizing of records in town hall.
So we treat so much.
Leslie will have, Leslie will have a sense of what that costs.
Yeah.
And how, and how people is across and accessing this to, to, I have no idea what that means. And all was to do that. Okay? So, there's a cost associated with that, I'm not sure there's necessarily a cost associated with catalog. You talk about somebody doing that, finish up catalog. You see the octopus doing that?
Possibly, yes, because it's a different kind of catalog, it's, it's, it is. It's a different kind of, it's not just putting books into the NLC catalog. It's reading, finding aids and other things that I don't have.
We, we have done some of them, who did that?
We got the books, we got most of the books cataloged, yes, yeah. But for archive collection, there are other things that you need, you need to help have people. There, and this is where I'm lost, this is where we hired. We hired, I guess. Have you hired a person?
Working on it.
That's where that person would tell us what it is we need above and beyond just having a book in the library.
It's gonna be, sure, just that we have software that we have to have a digital interface for the library and museum. There's gonna be something like this for digitizing.
Do that, yes.
Our catalog.
Yes, some of it, some of it is software, but it's still down there.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm not saying, no, I'm saying is that he was worrying about how it's gonna get up on the internet. I said, you're gonna get a template, template software, so, so that you can access. It's really gonna take you. I just don't, I just don't. There's, there's a cost associated with that software. And that's, that's my concern. The technical element works, okay, somebody will figure that out, it is a cost.
You know, quite honestly, I did, I turned, um, very nicely, yes, and he, I was very long. So I think once I go through that letter, I think that's the way to help people.
Okay, and that's fine.
He thought it was a very exciting project that the town was doing.
That's, well, and the town has already initiated this, I mean, the stuff that Leslie is. I mean, we wanna build on that, I think, with the article, it's starting to completing a task that is already started. I don't wanna, my preference is that this is a report as a, as a, as a beginning, it's a continual of something that is already gone, the town has already invested twenty thousand dollars, whatever it's. Into this project, this is the next phase, identifying the three departments that have archival records and need to convey, uh, assistance.
Yeah.
I guess we have over four hundred and fifty.
Yeah.
Thirty-five.
Yeah.
In thirty-five, yeah.
Yeah. So, and we, in the town, we have, I'm sorry, I'm closer, some of the oldest records.
I was amazed. They have the, um, most complete set of town records, um, in the country. And there are, I've worked with, in there, that there's only one of the copy, anyways. And one of them was the, um, cattle market. Honest, but, you know.
Yeah.
Joe Schmo.
Called him.
Did two nicks on the right ear, whatever, and it shows what they are.
Wow.
And it's really spooky to see these documents from the sixteen hundreds.
See, that's important. That's what we have records from the sixteen hundreds that need to be preserved. That's, again, as I'm thinking in advance of how we're gonna beat this drum, you know, once the article is there, and the people are cool. You know, and whatever it costs to cost, okay, records from the sixteen hundreds that need to be preserved. Okay, that's what we're pulling. It started already, let's continue. That's all. No, it's not like this, no, no, that's right, like I'm saying, the time has to be put forth as the three departments I'm putting it forward. And I definitely will sit down with most of the people, talk to her about where she's at. And how, you know, what it costs her to get to the point that she's at, that gives us some kind of a, a start. I thought it was somewhere around twenty-three.
It's expensive to do the presentation.
For the research.
But I do think you could have more senior volunteer. I keep saying, I love this thing.
Yeah, we had Sally, Sally, so she, I think she could get to it. She might be able to get to it in January. Did you talk with her at all?
No, never heard from her, did she hear from me? So, this is new information, thank you.
So I, I'll, um, hopefully, you know, along with finishing the request, I will, um, I just, that article, that, that's an article. The letter, you can confirm, and we'll see how, how.
Wait.
All right, so, let's, let's get through this, the budgets, get that all submitted, get through followings. Throwing in January, we get together, we start thinking about language for this article. We thought it was, we need to get her input into it, and other, we should talk to her in historical commission, so that they have input in this process, so.
I think we learned as much, start from, to run it, or, or session, or jam.
I'm hoping that, you know, we, we can put out something and we can put our take on things and then send it along to each part. I mean, they'll have to be consolidated.
Yeah, but I, you know, I don't think it has to be individual, I, my thought is that it's broad language, just references in the three departments.
Yeah, I guess I mentioned.
And then we submit that to Tracy, and, uh, we see the kind of reaction we get from that.
Oh, just find the word, articles from three, four, whatever, years ago.
Yeah.
Have you seen that article?
About lately?
Yeah, that would be very good.
I recall, but.
Yeah.
Her phone will be passed on it.
It's in September.
But that's not me. So it's certainly somewhere seventeen, sixteen, year, whatever.
I'm sure Leslie will remember.
Totally.
So, we'll, so, how many, in the beginning, we, you know, I got something to focus on in terms of, you know. And, and by, sometimes I'm sure, I guess, that you wanted, right?
Yes, and also to start focusing on.
Long range plan.
Director.
First things first.
Director hunt process, because I don't think you should delay. I think you should start as soon as you can, as help from the, uh, few resources folks, the janitor board. I think you should have a process because you're going to want to hire someone, um, but it's, it's complicated, but. I think you're gonna want somebody, sooner. And I have to start with my retirement, I have a little bit more, but I'm just, I'll retire at thirty. So, it's not all that much time, you gotta decide if you're going out, way out to look for inmates, or just looking at town.
What are, what are the statutes throwing guidelines on?
That I don't know, that's from the UH.
Oh, do you have, we, starting tonight, we just wrote it out, we.
Yeah.
Setting ourselves up to speed. Yeah. Change the chapter, search.
Six.
Search. All right, so that's the process, so we've got two major things to deal with in the, in the, I think, not this article, that's probably easy, but it's the long range plan. And the formation of, uh, game players, of, uh, direct research, you know, of going to four hundred. All right.
So, it's not wonderful, um, so do we have a date for it?
At the end of March, I think.
Yeah.
There was the other, I am, I guess, everybody's heard the fact that we've got made a maiden name, and closing that shop.
Another closing.
Yes, they, uh, they have a grant of seventy-five thousand dollars.
Tom loving.
Tom loving.
Who came in?
Yes.
Totally news.
Oh, okay.
Yes, we, yes.
They're supposed to, they've been busy elsewhere.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Wow.
They're also never gonna be here again.
Or there is, there's a foundation they've been around.
So since the development of the, of the, the national park. And that's, they, they started this nonprofit organization, uh, standing as the support for businesses and so on. Why, you said it now?
They're getting older and dying.
They're creating a lot of business, that's just, uh, will be for these businesses anywhere. I know it's, it's, companies come from outside, who don't take, so, the local, the long growth stuff is not there anymore. And they, they've been very gracious in terms of the conservative stuff in the paper. Uh, and I guess they did reference us.
Well, they love this stuff.
Yeah.
Yes, so they've been to us for many years.
Yeah.
So Smith was the principal, Bill Plant, and so they, he was always here.
Yeah, so we have, we have a class of people.
So Dick and I were just here one day, and, uh, France came in, and, um, she was, and I, I did break, anyway. Oh, I won't get the story too long. So she, she just asked if she could speak with me, and she said, um, she talked about me, she, it's just that she told us, or there's a people, anyway, she said, instead of filtering out a lot of small funds, do a lot of small nonprofits, we decided to go with people that we've heard supportive of years, that we know, that are stories of the pawns. And, and I heard this woman, and she said, so I went to, that this weekend, we're sending a check for seventy-five thousand dollars. I was like, oh, no, I was like. And I think I was having a particularly bad day, and just, I was first to tears, actually. But, and then, and Dick was sitting in my office, not realizing who this person was, so I pulled him out of my office, and then we had a lovely talk with that.
Yeah, but then I started questioning, I'm saying, did she really say seventy-five thousand?
Yeah.
Oh, was it seventy-five?
You were sure, you got it wrong.
I can be a nice objective in the years, you know, if you know what we've spent it on, or if you want to save it on, and all that. And it's, and there's no strings attached.
No strings at all.
Now, where is it showing up among that one?
It's the possibly victim memorial for now, and that will be one of the decisions my guys will have to make, to do it.
The number of his armor, there's, there's the money, you guys.
Yes, that's.
What did it to your library operator?
That's, yeah, yeah.
They're trying to walk away from that the last seven years.
Right, and that's.
Yeah. Nice problem to have, however.
This is a one type.
You know, it's technology, like, for a TV, and the, and the, the desktop, you couldn't get to, you know, the trans technology. Part of, of technologies have, you know, to be free.
Good chairs.
Yeah, exactly, some of them.
Are they?
Yeah, who happened? Yeah, mine?
That's all right. We have made a short.
Gone.
Aaron has, I didn't, you didn't read the list, whatever, whatever.
To be heard, follow those, adjourn, motion to adjourn.
So long.
Okay, meeting is over. Oh, they won't come up with the page for the next.